Good evening. Call to order the regular meeting of the Board of Education for January 12, 2022. Will everyone please rise for the pledge to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Justice for all. A reading of our mission statement. We are committed to academic achievement and success for all students in a safe environment. In partnership with families and our community, our mission is to promote confidence, inspire a passion for learning, and to prepare our students to become responsible global citizens. Just a few housekeeping notes. Our student board representative, Omar, is unable to attend this evening. And Dan, as Roddy trustee, will be joining us via Google this evening, so he's online. May I have a motion to approve the revised agenda?
A motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Questions or comments from interested citizens? Before we officially start with our couple of speakers, I'm going to bring up Mr. Liam Gaffney, who is a student of ours, who's going to share an initiative project from his Student Leadership Committee with us.
Good evening, Board of Education, Cabinet, and Superintendent Rodriguez. I was asked to speak tonight on behalf of the Student Leadership Committee. This is a group composed of three students from each grade level, as well as two students from the senior class who also serve on the Golden Lake Grad Party. As a group, we focus on challenges our student body faces. We can all agree that the past two years have been difficult for everyone, but students in particular. This year, the Student Leadership Committee decided we would focus on mental health as our big initiative. To hear what our student bodies' needs are, we sent out a survey to every high school student with some basic questions. Based on the response, we found that our biggest concern was equipping our students with resources within our school and community. In order to ensure everyone can obtain the resources they need, physical education classes will speak about mental health and the resources available to students in upcoming classes. At the end of the class and the discussion, students will have the opportunity to take home a pamphlet with all of the resources within the school district and community. This pamphlet includes names of our school counselors, psychologists, social workers, assistant counselors, and as well as our administrators, where they're located, and their email. Additionally, there will be a parent pamphlet that will also include each person's extension for easy communication. Both pamphlets will be posted on the district website, as well as sent to students and parents directly in email. I want to thank everyone for taking the time to listen and for being so supportive towards our mission. Have a great night.
Thanks very much, Liam. I don't know if Dr. Hassler has a couple of comments with it?
Sure, and I think a copy of the flyer is in front of you, Mrs. McLeary. In front of your computer.
Oh. Thank you. Got it. So I was able to attend this meeting yesterday, and just a little, I know Liam won't pat himself on the back, but I certainly will, because this was an idea that came to the Student Leadership Committee from Liam. So this pamphlet, which, as he stated, will then be printed and accessible to students, both physically in the building, but it will also be digital copies that will be online. So Dr. Hassler and Ms. Tauber and the committee are working on getting this organized to hand out to all the students and parents. And it really is a valuable resource that the students will be able to see who does what in the high school, for where they can access this help. So I applaud Liam and his classmates for going ahead and starting this. I think it's definitely well warranted, and I'm sure once it gets on the website, we'll blast it out.
Yep, that's absolutely correct. Part of the conversation also was we're moving into the season of the eighth graders visiting into the high school, and how we can start, you know, certainly with the current student body, but as well as welcoming in the incoming ninth graders on accessibility to various mental health resources in the high school, and, you know, accessing the various support staff that are in the building, who they are, where they're located, how to contact them. Mrs. Alise, the Director of Guidance at the high school, also participated in the meeting, and she's working, in addition to that flyer, she's working on a graphic about different avenues that students can explore in terms of the various types of needs that they may experience. So it's a lot of good things, and the kids came with a lot of excellent ideas for us to be able to work with.
Absolutely. Yesterday, the students were the primary pushers of the ideas, which was great, so it'll be good to see. So thank you so much, Liam, for sharing that with everybody. Moving on, we have a few questions and comments this evening. Our first speaker is Mr. Daryl McElroy, and he will be speaking on the continued impacts of the pandemic on education and the MOA between the MWTA and MWCSD.
Good evening, Superintendent Rodriguez, President McLeary, Vice President Siriello, members of the Board, the Cabinet, and members of the Monroe Woodbury community. My name is Daryl McElroy, and I am the President of the Monroe Woodbury Teachers Association. It has been some times since a Monroe Woodbury graduate has led the MWTA, but it is a point of tremendous pride for me, a class of 1995 graduate. My family still resides in the district, and my brother's children are students. I'm heavily invested in Monroe Woodbury, and I truly want this district to succeed. Throughout the pandemic, the members of the MWTA and MWEA have drawn tremendous work to keep students fed, healthy, safe, and educated. With little training, we pivoted to a remote environment in the spring of 2020, when nobody knew what the future held. Last year, with district stakeholders, our members helped craft a plan to safely return to in-person learning that prioritized students' social emotional health and centered compassion and grace. We pivoted from remote to hybrid to remote, and back to hybrid again. This year, we returned to full in-person instruction, and my members are doing yeoman's work in trying to provide the best school environment possible, given the circumstances. From kindergarten to 12th grade, members were excited to have full classrooms engaged in every subject. We believe that in-person instruction is best for students and their teachers, and we have worked hard to maintain the COVID safety protocols in the buildings, but we cannot do it alone, and the first vice president will speak to that later. My members care deeply about their students and want them to succeed despite the challenges of the last two years. Doing more with less is sadly nothing new in public education, but the pandemic has been an extraordinary experience that has only exacerbated the challenges we faced. Because we want the best for our students, our members feel tremendous and unrealistic pressure to make up for lost time. Sadly, we have to endure baseless attacks on what and how we teach in the classroom. Like everyone else, we are trying to maintain our own mental and physical health, as well as that of our families. We don't need workshops on self-care. We need to have things taken off our plates so we can use our professional time to meet the immediate needs of our students. We need more staff to lower class sizes, caseloads, and clerical burdens. It has certainly been the most challenging time of my 21-year career in public education, all at Monroe Woodbury, but the members I represent are the ones who truly deserve recognition and kudos for their tireless efforts against odds that at many times seem insurmountable. I am proud to lead a union of dedicated professionals that includes the teachers, teaching assistants, school psychologists, school counselors, school social workers, athletic trainer, and OTPT. Along with the MWEA president, Colleen Buck, I also represent the members of the MWEA, including the clerical staff, AV techs, school nurses, food service, teacher aides, monitors, and school security aides. Together, we are 1,000 members strong. Earlier this afternoon, the membership of the MWTA voted to overwhelmingly ratify a one-year contract by a vote of 446 to 5. This one-year contract represents a down payment on a fair contract settlement that accounts for the tremendous efforts and sacrifices made by all of my members since the pandemic began in March of 2020. We look forward to continuing our discussions with the district to further this goal. By ratifying this agreement now, we will be able to focus our energies on maintaining in-person learning, and will continue to work with the district on additional ways to support students who continue to be negatively impacted by the pandemic. We are hopeful that the Board supports this down payment, and we thank you in advance for your consideration and support. I would like to wish anyone who is presently ill with COVID, or any other illness, a speedy recovery. This pandemic continues to wreak havoc on so many lives, and it is my sincere hope that we will not have to endure this pandemic for much longer. With all of the uncertainty of the past two years, one thing that has been constant has been our dedication to doing what is best for our students and the school community. Together, we will be able to get through this difficult time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I do know that Mrs. Capen was originally going to speak, but she's not here, so Mr. Gardner is going to be speaking on building safety and COVID-19 protocol.
Good evening to all. My name is Jacob Gardner, and I am the first vice president of the Monroe Woodbury Teachers Association. I am also a graduate of Monroe Woodbury, and like Daryl, I have also spent my entire career teaching here in Monroe Woodbury and want nothing more than to see our district succeed. I am here tonight to speak about school safety and the health-related concerns regarding the ongoing pandemic. We have heard the concerns of our members in a recent listening tour. Many of them identified concerns with student discipline and also with COVID-19 protocols. Every child in our class is somebody's whole world. We have heard the concerns expressed by our colleagues, our students, and our parents of the community with regards to our students' physical safety. If our children cannot feel safe, very little meaningful learning can take place in our buildings. That is why we are working with district leaders to bring these issues forward and work on meaningful solutions. We look forward to working with Mr. Tripodo and the central administration to develop a plan that will protect the physical safety of our students while respecting restorative discipline strategies that are being used. We believe that the issues we see with students are a direct result of the pandemic, not that students are learning the actual history of the country or reading new culturally responsive texts in class. While we may not agree on the prognosis, this is certainly a need to address student discipline in a way that will actually help teach the students to make better choices and socialize in appropriate ways. As stated earlier, we fully support in-person instruction. It is the best modality for everyone, especially our students. Teachers are doing everything we possibly can to help keep our buildings open for in-person instruction and to meet the needs of our students. Any suggestion that our union is trying to shut Monroe Woodbury schools down is a claim that is not tethered in reality. From covering classes on our prep and lunch periods, to connecting with students online to provide instruction for those that are quarantined, the Monroe Woodbury Teachers Association members are stepping up, as they have throughout the pandemic, and I thank them for that. As far as COVID-19 is concerned, our members want to keep schools open for in-person instruction, and they want the environment to be as safe as possible for everyone. We cannot do it alone. We need support from parents, administrators, and the Board to lead by example and encourage proper masking in school buildings. We need support from parents and administrators to keep students safe, keep students home if they are ill, send them home if they become ill in school. We need to double our efforts in cleaning and ventilating our buildings, provide more PPE to students and staff, particularly KN95 masks and hand sanitizer. In fact, we recently received a donation of hand sanitizer from a member that we would like to distribute to each building. If we want in-person instruction to continue uninterrupted, then we must put aside whatever personal feelings we have about the protocols and work together as a school community. Thank you to the Board, to the Monroe Woodbury administrative team, and to all faculty and staff that have been working tirelessly to provide our students with the proper instruction during this global pandemic that we all face. Thank you.
Thank you. Updates on questions or comments from our previous meeting? Elsie?
I believe that Eric is going to speak to a comment that was made at our last board meeting regarding data. So Eric, did you want to?
Sure. I was asked to provide a little bit of context on some of the data that was presented at the last Board of Ed meeting by one of the speakers. Specifically, the speaker spoke about the school district's 2019 report card that's posted on the data site of the New York State Department of Education. The data that was shared was related to eighth-grade student performance in reading with a proficiency rate of all students of 20% and 22% proficiency in math. But more specifically, there was data presented on the performance of Black students being proficient in reading at 17%, Hispanic students being proficient at a 19% rate in reading. And in math, the proficiency rate for Black students was 12%, and the proficiency rate for Hispanic students was 14%. If you were to go to the school report card for Monroe Woodbury for 2019, that data actually appears as being presented from New York State on the NAEP assessment, the National Assessment of Educational Progress. In 2020, 73 schools were chosen by the U.S. Department of Education in New York State to participate in the NAEP exam. So the results that were being presented were the performance rates and proficiency rates across the entire state. They were the state averages. They were not specific to Monroe Woodbury. In fact, Monroe Woodbury didn't participate in the NAEP exam in 2020. We participated in the NAEP exam in 2019. So that data is statewide data that is presented on the school report cards of every single school in New York State as being state data. They actually provide a little bit of information saying that because the sample size by state is so small, they don't report district-level or school-level results, only state-level results. So even though it appears on the Monroe Woodbury report card, it appears on the report card of all school districts, and it's statewide data and not district-specific data.
So the same data appears on every one of those schools that were part of that NAEP assessment?
It appears on the school report card of every single school district in New York State, whether you participated in the NAEP or not.
Oh, okay.
Yep. Because it's statewide data, not district-specific data.
Do we have the data for the district?
We didn't, in this exam, we didn't participate in that exam, because the sampling is, even on the years that we participate, it's not the entire... They administer the exam in fourth grade and eighth grade, so if we have one of the two five buildings, or the middle school is selected to participate in the exam that year, they give us a list of kids that are to participate. It's not even the entire student body that participates. Because the sampling is so small, that's the reason why they don't drill down to the school or the district level, because even last year in 2020, only 73 schools in the entire state participated in the exam. So they don't report any district-wide results.
That makes sense. I meant, is there another assessment that looks at the data, a different one besides NAEP?
I mean, typically, it's the state, you know, the three-through-eight ELA in math exam, the fourth grade and eighth grade science exam, all of the region's exams. That's typically what's reported.
And do we know what those numbers are?
I think usually Dr. Hassler gives us an update on that in the spring. It's usually a presentation to us.
Right, normally, there's usually two presentations. It's the presentation on the three-through-eight testing results, and then there's a presentation on the passing rate of the region's.
And the regions, okay. So that'll be coming in a couple, as soon as we have that information available. Okay, anything else? I think I just had one. I know Mrs. Steltz had commented directly in regards to the Board and the policy in regards to public speaking. The Policy Committee did meet, and we have the policy that we have for public participation. One of the things that we discussed that we're looking into doing, that we have done the research and see that other school districts do do this, is they allow for two sections of public comment. So what they'll do sometimes is, at the start of the meeting, the public comment section is strictly on the business that is on the agenda, and the second portion that comes later in the evening on the agenda is for other concerns and/or comments to the school district. So that is something that the Policy Committee is going to look into, and perhaps we can look to try to make a change for that in the future. So that was something that we did discuss at our recent policy meeting.
Elsie, can I just go back to the speakers? I just have a question.
Yeah.
It's a little difficult to hear. I just want to thank you both for speaking, but if possible, can you share a copy of your notes with the Board so that we can read through it better?
If you can send it directly to Lisa, that's perfect, and she'll make sure that we all get it. Thank you so much. Okay, so I think that was it. Moving on, item number six is an update on COVID-19, which is going to be led by Mrs. Rodriguez.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for allowing me to present an ever-changing COVID update. I'm going to try to navigate and read that there, not here, because I can't leave my glasses on. So I'll click. Before I begin, I just want to say a very big thank you to Dr. Sassy and all our school nurses, because they have been navigating all of the changes. And one of the big things that school districts have been required to do since the beginning of returning to in-person instruction is something called contact tracing. And I just want everyone to know that when your school nurse is contact tracing along with the building administration, that is hours and hours of work. They have to take a look at a chart. If it's a student who's in the cafeteria, there's scanning. There's just so much work that goes into that, and I just want to say a very big thank you to our nurses, because they've done a phenomenal job, aside from just running, being a nurse in a school, right? Because we still get students who feel sick. We still get students that get hurt. Okay. Is this something that I said? Let me move this closer. Let's try this. So I am going to see if I can... The district goals are still the same, right? We want to, and I thank Daryl and Jake for talking about, we want to maintain in-person instruction. That is a goal that both the union and the district continue to strive for. The second thing is maintain a healthy, safe educational environment for students and staff. And then the third thing is really, we're trying to foster a sense of normacy when it isn't normal, right? We're constantly in an uncertain environment. And so these are the things that we continue to strive for in our district. And I want to talk a little bit on this slide, is how do changes happen? The first piece is that the CDC usually will make a recommendation. And I think what happens is, when the CDC puts out a document, our families and our community members believe that we instantly follow those guidelines or recommendations. That's not how it works. The governor went on TV, and she continued to say that we need to keep our schools safe, and she wants to keep our students in school. But then the next step is, New York State has to adopt these guidelines. So once New York State adopts it, again, parents feel that, and community members feel that, well, why haven't you made the changes? Well, it goes to another level. The next level is, the Orange County Health Department has to approve it, right? Your local department of health makes those guidelines, and then they provide them to school district. That's when we make decisions. So there's a process that we need to follow, and it's similar to when the governor, Governor Cuomo, would come out with a statement, and someone would say, well, he said on TV on Tuesday that you can do X, Y, and Z. And my response is, it's not true until it becomes law. So this is the process. I wanted to share that to the community, and again, this will be on, I believe it's on the website, so that people can take a look at it. So there have been some major changes. Let me go back. So one of the major changes is that when a student is either quarantined or a staff member, they have to quarantine for 10 days. The word quarantine will no longer be used. It's now isolate. Our health departments will no longer be giving quarantine orders. So school districts will be telling you that you need to isolate. So we've gone from 10 days to five days, but I want to explain, because you're going to hear a change from 10 to 5, how that works. So when you're looking at the calculation of days, the first day is what we call day zero. And that is really when your symptoms begin. So if you get up in the morning and you feel like you have a cold, or a runny nose, or you have a slight fever, that is day zero. But there's also people who are what we call asymptomatic, no symptoms at all. They decide they're going to take a COVID test, and they test positive. That's their day zero. And I'm focusing on this information, because that information is going to be critical as we talk about when you can return to school. So when that happens, either you test positive, or you begin to have symptoms, you take a test, obviously, and then you should call our school nurse. If it's after hours, we've now developed a Google form, which I'll show you later, that will allow you to put the information. And you're going to have questions like, what was your day zero? And that's going to be important, because then that starts to give us when you can return to school. Immediately, you're to isolate for five full days following day zero. So day one through five, you are home. And then you can return to school on day six, if asymptomatic or symptoms are resolving. So I spoke to Dr. Sassy, and I said, what does that mean? And she said, well, that you don't have a fever for 24 hours, and you're not taking medication to reduce the fever, that you're feeling better. She said some symptoms can last for months. For example, some people have lost their sense of smell or taste, and that can last for months. But, so the language we use is symptom-reducing. You return to school on day six, but when you return to school, you have to make sure that you're wearing a well-fitted mask in school. Here is a copy of what you will look at. It's a Google form. It doesn't have all the information in it. I'm just going to take a look at this here for a second. And there's going to be specific questions, like, for example, email, your address. If you're a parent, a teacher, a staff member, your name, the parent, the school or the department that you belong to, your phone number, date of first symptom. Remember that I said that that's going to be critical. That's what we call day zero, or when you tested positive and you were asymptomatic. And all of that information will be shared with Dr. Sassy and then with our school nurses. And so you'll be able to get some information, a call back, to say when you can return back to school or work. And again, this is the criteria for you to be able to return to school. No fever for at least 24 hours without fever-reducing medication. Symptoms are resolving. And so that means that if day six, you still have a fever, or you still feel sick, you're very exhausted, because that's another symptom that we see. It doesn't necessarily mean that you have to return to school. If you're still feeling sick, you should stay home. And then, again, it's really important that you wear a well-fitting mask, and you should only remove the mask when you're eating or drinking, and then put it back on. Another big change for us is that you will no longer need a doctor's note or a negative COVID test. They're not required for you to return back to school. Protocols if you're exposed. Again, we used to talk about 10 days, now the protocol is five days. If you're exposed to COVID-19 and you are not fully vaccinated, you will have to isolate for five days. And when you return to school, again, you have to make sure that you're wearing that well-fitted mask around others. If you are fully vaccinated, there is no isolation that's required. Again, wear a well-fitting mask while others, for 10 days until the last date of exposure. It's going to be really important for those people who are fully vaccinated and are exposed that they really need to make sure that they don't have a fever, or something doesn't, you know... There are some symptoms that trigger that. If you are exposed and you have a vaccination, and you start to feel those symptoms, you need to get tested and you need to stay home. Again, and it says the same thing at the bottom, individuals who feel ill should stay home. And this is just a couple of few important reminders. Masks must be worn inside district buildings at all time, other than when you're eating or drinking. Masks should completely cover the nose and mouth, and should fit snugly over the sides of the face with no gap. We recommend that you wear one with a little bit of a metal on it, so that it fits well over your nose. Maintain social distance within school. And again, it's really important, I know Daryl mentioned it, and so did Jake. It's important for our families to understand, and our staff as well. If you are not feeling well, you need to stay home. And that's the only way that we're going to mitigate. That's an important mitigating strategy for us as a school district. I missed a slide. There's something else that I wanted to share with the community, because I know that when we, as a district, made a decision on Monday to go remote at the middle school and the high school, there was some bit of chatter about, well, we looked at the COVID numbers, and it didn't appear like there were enough people who were sick to dictate why you decided to go remote. Well, I think that, number one, you have to understand that the daily school survey that we do only pertains to instructional buildings. It does not pertain to staff who do not report to an instructional building. It does not take a look at our transportation department, which is a critical piece for us to be able to transport, right? That information is not shared on this dashboard. And then lastly, we have quite a number of staff members and students who've been quarantined due to an exposure. So if you're at home because you have been quarantined, you're not on this list. So I just want people to be cognizant that the list that I share with you does not tell the full picture. It only says, it only shows you what the state requires me to put into the dashboard. So I wanted to make sure that I shared that with the community. Again, this information is going to be posted. It's going to be on our website. The big difference is that we're going from 10 days... The big difference is that we're going from 10 days to five days, the truth, it's really six days. Because remember, day zero is the first day that you have symptoms or that you've tested positive. And then you count five days from there and you come, you are allowed to come back to school on day six. Any questions?
Can I, can I clarify something?
Yes.
So you definitely don't need a test to come back, but when you're initially testing, you have symptoms, do not test with an antigen test because if that's negative, you can still be positive.
True.
So the initial testing should be done with a PCR test. That, that has a really, really good statistics of telling you whether you have it or not have it. So if someone is symptomatic on day zero, but decides to test with an antigen test and they're negative, they're not necessarily negative.
Correct. It could be a false negative. But I think that one of the things that we did in handing out our, the tests that we received from the state, my understanding was that quite a number of people must have taken those tests because, and I, I haven't put out the dashboard today, we'll put it out in the morning, we had 105 students that tested positive over the weekend.
Well, the, the positive test is good.
Yes. I mean, it's not good, but yes.
It's a screening test.
Correct. And I think that that's, in light of the fact that people are really struggling to get a PCR test, it's something that's an indication. I agree with you. If your child has a fever and you give them one of those at-home tests, don't send them to school.
Right.
But, but certainly, if you take that at-home test and it's positive, it's, it's positive.
Yes, you're staying home.
And, and I think that's, that's really important. And I think another question, and I didn't mention it, on the dashboard, not the dashboard, on the Google form that we give to parents to fill out after hours on the weekend, it's going to ask you specifically, is this a PCR test or is this a lab test? But again, when someone tests positive on those at-home tests, you are positive.
Can I just piggyback on that because I had that as a question also? So on this Google form where it's stating what kind of a test did you take, to, to Sergey's question, if, if my child does not have symptoms, okay? But perhaps they were exposed and I use one of the tests that we distributed to our students, it's technically a home test, that home test now comes up negative. It's okay then for that student to come to school, correct?
Yes, because if they have no symptoms.
Correct.
If they're symptom-free, right? The key is being symptom-free.
Symptom-free. But now I'm going to add the other piece to that. So the other piece, and these are all questions that I'm, I'm sure other board members are getting as well. So now I have a child who has one of the symptoms. They now re, reverse back to those tests that they were able to get from us, which is the home test, and it does come back negative. So in their head, they might be tired, they might have a headache, they might have runny nose, sniffles, but the test says negative. So is our advice to still stay home and then follow up with a PCR test? Because that's a big question that a lot of people are having.
And it's good to have a doctor on the phone.
The antigen, the antigen test is a screening test. The screening tests are good when they're positive and they're not good when they're negative, or not good enough.
Okay.
And they're negative. So if you have a child that has symptoms, runny nose, itchy eyes, cough, malaise, and the test is negative, you probably would either want to keep your kid home or confirm it with a PCR.
PCR, okay. Okay.
That makes, that makes a lot of sense, yes.
Because, because symptoms beat tests. We always say as physicians, you got to look at the patient, you, you can't look at the test to tell you, to give you the answer. If the patient is symptomatic, patient is symptomatic.
Correct. Thank you.
Elsie, just a, sorry, I just have a comment on your piece about not showing the big picture of the dashboard because, you know, I definitely got a lot of questions as well saying it didn't really marry up with, but it also, it doesn't show staff that are out for other reasons.
Sick.
Or, you know, there's other things besides COVID, right? So.
Correct. And I think that's important because a lot of people are, yes, people are getting sick with COVID.
But it could be personal time.
It could be a person.
It could be anything.
And a staff member can decide that, you know, they can have a personal day that they had scheduled.
Family sick day.
Or a family sick day, or the staff member is awaiting the results of a PCR test, right?
Or they're a professional development. It could be many, many, many different reasons.
Correct. So it's such a small snippet of what we present. And again, I think that there was this concern, maybe the word is correct, from the community that felt that we had made this decision arbitrarily. And the truth of the matter is that there's lots of factors, mitigating factors that, that brought us to that place. And again, we're not, we're not really giving all, the full picture of what's going on.
And it wasn't a decision made lightly.
Uh, no. That, that, I will tell you that that decision, we spent most of our morning speaking to people and getting information and, and it was with a heavy heart that we said, we can't have school, we, we really can't bring kids in. And I also didn't want to have this inconsistency, right? We want to be able to say on a weekly basis, this is what we can do. Again, I don't control that. You know, you may get a group of people who are sick and as a result, I can't transport or I can't teach. And those will be specific to buildings, but I, we are staying away from saying, K-12, we're closing down the district. We, we really want to keep it open.
And I think that message, you know, to, to Mr. Gardner and Mr. McGellaroy's point as well, the board as well and the cabinet are, are really doing everything possible to keep the kids in school. I mean, to that point on, which I'm, you know, not trying to praise us, but we had a two-hour meeting, a special meeting on a Saturday to discuss just this topic. You know, we have a vested interest, as many of us on the board have students and grad students in the district, and we want the same thing that the teachers want, that the superintendent wants, and that's for the students to be in school. So it's important for the public.
Safely.
It's important for them to realize that everybody's working towards the same goal, it's just how we're getting there and the pieces that are fitting into the puzzle aren't always the clearest to some.
Right.
And, and that brings me to my other question that has come up now with some of the testing is, with this new protocol and, and situation that's happening, one of the questions that I've gotten quite frequently is, what should parents and/or students be doing once they do have that positive? Aside from reaching out to their school nurse, should they also be reaching out to their teachers? Should they be reaching out to their counselors? How do they go about setting up the tutoring program that's offered?
Oh, yes.
I think there's a lot of misinformation that's going on as to, there, there are resources available for those students who test positive and have to isolate, but I don't know that they're, that they know where to get it all the time. So if you could just speak to that a little bit?
I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Hassler because he's been overseeing that piece.
Sure. And, and each of the buildings has their own individual process in terms of how that takes place. Basically, notification comes to the school in various different ways that the student is positive or is going to have to quarantine. You know, previously, we were notified of a positive case, we would conduct the, the contact tracing. So aside from just the notification about the, the positive case, it's also notifying the various students who may have been exposed in the cafeteria in the lunch period or whatever. And then that kind of initiates the process within the individual building about the establishment of home instruction. Each of the schools typically has one point person who is in charge of doing that, where they'll communicate with the staff, they'll also communicate with the parent about setting up the timeframe. And usually, it's linking the staff member with the, the parent and the student to be able to set up a, a convenient time for them to be able to provide that, that home instruction. Plus, it's also because, you know, we, we try very hard in many cases to have it be the, the actual teachers of the student that are providing the instruction, but that's not always the case. It's also then, if the home instructor is not going to be the teacher, communicating with the teachers themselves that the student has to make sure that they're compiling the work and giving the materials to the student so that way they can participate in the home instruction.
Okay. Okay, perfect.
Any other questions? Just a, just a note that the county will no longer be giving you individualized reports. They simply said they don't have the staff to do this.
The released, the released documents.
The released documents. It's going to be automated because they just don't have the capability of continuing with a number of, of cases that they have in the county. And that's pretty much most counties.
And also, the, the governor announced today that they're going to be discontinuing contact tracing across the state. That's no longer going to be a function of the, the local health departments. I will say, as far as good news, we were inundated with staff and parent notifications over the, the holiday break in terms of people who were positive. So a lot of those people who let us know right after the holidays that they were positive, their quarantines are, are wrapping up and they'll, if they haven't come back already, they will be back, you know, very soon.
But they let you know they're positive via a, not an at-home test, right? That, that's not sufficient.
They let us know in lots of different ways.
Well, you asked, you asked a question about at home.
But that's not a sufficient.
No, positive, positive.
A positive is a positive.
Positive is a positive.
We, we, we had a meeting yesterday with the county and, and we asked, you know, we've distributed all of these at-home tests. Do we accept an at-home test? And the response from the county was, yeah, you, you need to count that as a test. If someone, if a parent calls you and says, I did an at-home test and the child is positive, it's a positive.
So that's a change.
That's a change. Yes, it is.
So going forward, those students will be entitled to the home instruction.
Correct.
Based on an at-home test.
Correct.
Not one test is sufficient.
That one test. Well, I mean, one, what I asked them to do in, in the communication was, if you test positive, you really should, well, you call the school and you should contact your provider, your doctor, and let them know, right? That, that's, that's the protocol that we've enacted in order to make sure that everybody knows. But yes, an at-home test will be acceptable.
And that's true for students and employees?
Employees, it's not yet been resolved. We have to figure that piece out. I think that they talked about the state, at, at, at least at the local level, that there's a way for a teacher who gets an at-home test to access some individualized, uh, testing, standardized response or something. I, I am not sure about that piece. That we'll have to look into. They weren't able to answer that question yesterday when I asked them.
So how does that work, Elsie, with a, a student that tests positive at an at-home test, it is, and is not vaccinated and lives with other students? Are they then, do they stay home and get the same home instruction?
So the question that you're at.
The whole family then has to stay home, right?
It's exposure, right? Is what she's questioning.
If they're not vaccinated.
Right, that's what I just said. So then they would all be able to get the home instruction as well. So they're going to be reporting that a family member is positive.
Correct.
And the other students now are staying home.
Because they need to quarantine for five days.
But in, in the opposite of that, if it's a student in a vaccinated situation.
Right, so there's layers.
Only the positive student has to stay home, correct? And the, the siblings that are.
Do not have to.
As long as they're vaccinated, they can return to school.
Correct.
As long as they're symptom-free.
Is that a voluntary thing? I mean, they may feel more comfortable staying home.
Some people have, some students, I know that some students have called the nurse and asked and said, you know, I don't feel comfortable. And so we've, we've done that on an individual basis, right? If a family feels like, you know what, we've all been together, I'm probably going to get positive. I mean, with this variant that we have, it's regardless of whether you've had your vaccinations or not. So yes, I think that's it.
So somebody reaches out to them? If somebody in the high school tests positive and they have siblings in the middle school and North Main, who takes care of the North Main and the middle school?
Usually Dr. Sassy. So if it's a high school student, they take a look at who's in the family. And she's very good at informing her, the nurses throughout the district. They're really good at doing that. And, and this work that they've been doing is ongoing. It's, it's an enormous amount of work.
They have the conversations about the vaccination status, whether they're boosted, like, they, they have all of those conversations with the families.
And then somebody coordinates the home instruction piece.
Right.
Yep.
And then the, each of the schools has a master list about home instruction, the start date, the end date, and the nurses have access. They put the student on there specifically for, you know, COVID positive or quarantine or whatever. And then again, that triggers the, the other process to start.
So the same, i- if a parent tests positive and their, their children are not vaccinated, then the children stay home.
Well, they would have to contact the school nurse. And the, the big piece is contact your school nurse because there, there needs to be a conversation with the school nurse and she'll give you guidance. Generally, it's, you probably need to quarantine.
And this will be shared with families?
This particular thing, this is going to be on the website. And again, the good thing is that we videotape all of this so someone can re, look at it again.
The initial email did already come out. As parents, we did get the initial change email, which was pretty much the directive to reach out. So. My last question was, based off of the changes, do you anticipate that you are still going to be sending out your weekly COVID reports? Or is that something that, I mean, again, I just, I don't know how much you're going to, I just, it's just a question.
Well, I, I want to say that I've been doing, well, we've been doing the weekly COVID reports because we just have been doing it. And I, and I, you know, we've talked about not doing it anymore and I think that there would be this belief that I'm not doing it because the numbers are so high. I'm going to continue to share the information, but I just wanted families to understand that it doesn't show the true picture.
Okay, good.
I, I may, again, it's not, I, I may add another layer to it, but again, this is, most school districts don't do this. They give you a link and they say, go to the link and fix, and.
And check the dashboard.
And check the dashboard. I like to give the information because I think that the, the mission of the board and, and all of us sitting here is to be transparent. But in light of being transparent, there are things that I'm not sharing because it's just simply not in the dashboard. And, and Lisa Sooden, sitting to my right, is a person who has to enter that information every day. So again, when people ask me why we did what we did the last week, it's simply because there's so many other people, there's so other, so many other mitigating factors that people are sick for other reasons and it doesn't show that on the dashboard. And the dashboard, I'm going to say it again, only illustrates what's happening in a school building. It doesn't talk about the ed center. We're not even part of that. So it's, it's important for families to know that when I share that information, that's what I'm sharing.
So I had a question on, so I just want to walk through this scenario. If someone has the flu, it's not COVID, but they don't, they don't know if it's COVID or the flu. So they're symptomatic for flu symptoms, they're going to stay home.
They should stay home, yes. But, but I'm, what I'm saying is, this is a season of people getting the flu.
Right.
And people have gotten pneumonia. I mean, I, I think that we're, we're, COVID is not the only thing that people are getting sick and so we're.
Now, now they, we see combination of flu and COVID together.
Yeah. So it's, so it's really important, I, I'm, again, I'm going to reiterate this statement. It's really important for our families, if your child is feeling sick, please stay home, keep the child at home. Because it, it may not just be COVID, it may be something else. And so it's the winter, we're indoors more, the spread of diseases or viruses are, you know, a lot stronger because of there, we're not opening up the windows. And so it's important for people to understand that. And, and I really do ask for our parents to support us on that. And if your child is sick, please keep your child at home.
I, I was just bringing that comment up because when we think about pre-COVID, right? The number of kids who had the flu, if, if we had, if they had to stay home and, and isolate for five days once, you know, because they had symptoms, you know, just mentally thinking about how vacant the school would be just for flu, not COVID, right? Seems like a pretty big burden.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you very much.
Just, just one more, one more comment. I just want to reiterate that if you have a child who is vaccinated and who has been exposed to family members, these children are probably a little bit more likely to be asymptomatic. So it's very important to be very, very diligent and maybe even use those in-home tests just to be sure 100% because if you're vaccinated, your symptoms are probably going to be very, very minimal.
Yeah, we, we've distributed, I think, close to 3,000 tests. We still have a ways to go. I encourage our families to pick them up from, I think it's what, 10 to 2 at the education center. the education center. Please bring a form of ID. You do not need to do any kind of work, go online or anything like that. However, if you are unable to access one and you have a neighbor that can pick them up, just have a letter. We have a Google form for that as well, so that we can give them to you. We really want to get these tests in the hands of our families. So I just, if, once we get through this Friday, then we'll look at another way of delivering them to our families, but we want to make sure that our families get these tests.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on, item number seven, an approval of the minutes from the previous meeting on December 15th, 2021. May I have a motion?
A motion.
A second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. May I have a motion to approve the revised 2021, 2022 student calendar, which will illustrate that last Monday, excuse me, was no longer a school day, but we use it as a staff development day. So that is what that change is for the student calendar. So can I have a motion for that?
A motion.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Policy manual update. So the policy committee did meet, and this is policy number 5630, which this is the first reading for that policy. And the change on here was going to be that we are being instructed by New York State that we have to add in each policy that there is a safety rating that takes place with each building. So we met with the head of our Buildings and Grounds. That will be now documented in there and also documented on our website along with the fire inspection. So that is what the change in this policy is going to be. So this is our first reading for that.
And there's one more change, that prior to this, you had to do a visual inspection every year. Now it's going to be concurrent with your five-year-
Building condition.
Building condition, building condition survey, yes.
Okay. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, committee reports. I'll go first for policy. Like I said, we did meet. The two things that we discussed were policy number 5630. And then I also mentioned during the public comment portion of the meeting that we did also discuss the question that had gotten raised by one of the citizens. So that is something that we will continue to look into and report back if we decide to go ahead and actually change and alter that within our policy. And our next policy meeting is scheduled for February 15th. So that is policy. I'll give it to Dawn for visitation.
I don't think there's a visitation update since we last met. I think our next one is scheduled for CB and the Buildings and Grounds Department in about a month or so.
Yep, correct. Okay.
The meeting is tonight, and I was unable to attend because I am here.
Correct. Dawn for facilities?
Yes, we had facilities and audit. And facilities, we had a kickoff meeting with our new architect. I'll let Patrick, if you have any thing to add to facilities.
Yeah, we had the joint meeting with facilities and visitation, and we, we met David Sammel of CPL, which is our new architect of record. And I, I think one of the notable things that Dave Sammel brought up was the idea of guiding principles to help the facilities committee and the board make decisions about the scope of our capital projects in the near, in the future, and, and the referendum that we're planning for in the fall of 2022. And although we didn't sort of finalize those, it felt like the, the group agreed with some of the suggestions he had made. And I don't want to take too much time, but what we covered was improve health and safety. So, so this would be criteria we'd use to evaluate capital projects and prioritize capital projects. Maintain and expand educational opportunities for students. Maintain facilities-related comparability and parity between school buildings. Correct non-conformances. So this is just things that are out, out of code, and we'd have to, you know, correct that if we do any work. Avoid imminent failure. So that's something we've been talking a lot about, where a lot of our building systems are past their useful life and in danger of failing. Enhance energy efficiency, reduce operating expenses. And the final principle was maintain or improve the district's debt profile during and after the capital project process. So I thought that was interesting and important. We also covered the timeline, the pre-referendum timeline, and we talked about when the referendum date may be. We talked about something, I would think in a six to eight-week period between sort of mid-October and December 1st. David had used December 1st as sort of a tentative date, and then he built the timeline from that. So I thought it was a good meeting. We have a lot of work to do, obviously, in that area, but it was a good, a good start, good kickoff meeting.
Thank you. And audit, anything for that, Dawn?
Yeah, we, we're, we're initializing the RFP for the, for the auditors. Again, I'll let Patrick give the details. He has all of the-
Yes, that's right, Dawn. So it's the internal auditor. So we've, we started that RFP process. We're going to wrap that up in probably a month or so. And, you know, realize we have the external auditor, which does our, our, for our financial reports every year. And we also have the internal auditor. So the internal auditor does a risk assessment every year and then picks an area, a specific area to evaluate. So, you know, we're hopeful that we would have all that field work done for that area by, let's say, mid-March. And then if there's any findings, we do a corrective action plan, and the board would adopt that probably in June, and we'd have the whole thing wrapped up, you know, within this fiscal year. In, in the past, we've, we've been lagging a little bit, but, you know, we're, we're on track to, to, to have that all done in, in this year. We, you know, we also talked a little bit about the COVID-19-related funding that we've gotten. There's, you know, there's three grants, went through the permissible uses of that. We talked a little bit about being cognizant of not using one-time money for ongoing operational expenses. So that's an important, you know, caveat that reminded everybody about. We, we talked about the extracurricular activity training that we, we did here at the high school, we're going to do at the middle school. We did that through the business office, which is good news. In the past, we used a consultant for that. So we've built the internal capacity to do that ourselves, so that's great. And then finally, we discussed the bond refunding resolution and process that is on the agenda tonight a little bit. And that's, that's good news, too. It's an opportunity to save around $150,000 to $160,000 a year for the next, each of the next five years for the district to refund those bonds.
Okay. Thank you. I will just note that the next facilities meeting is scheduled for March 1st, and the next visitation meeting, I believe, is for January 20th. And audit, the next meeting is on March 17th. Those are all posted on our district website as well. So as Patrick just stated, we have a resolution on the agenda this evening, item number 11. So it is a resolution for refunding bond resolution of the Monroe Woodbury Central School District, authorizing the refunding of certain bonds. May I have a motion to approve this?
A motion.
Oh, excuse me. Go ahead, Suzanne.
Yeah. Patrick, I was just curious. Does refunding change the maturity date at all?
It, it does not, no. So it's, it's 2027 is the current maturity. We're going to refund for five years. It would be the same maturity date.
Thank you.
Sorry, any other questions? Okay. May I have a motion?
Motion.
A second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unfortunately, we do not have a report this evening specifically from the student board representative, as he is not here. But I did ask him if he had anything that he wanted me to share, so forgive me. I am just going to read this from him. So his wishes this evening are just for everyone to be conscious about COVID and make sure that they are wearing their masks correctly to help minimize the spread. So that is from Omar Mosker, our student board representative, who was unable to be here with us this evening. Personnel, Matt?
Thank you very much. There are a number of items listed under personnel, just a few I just want to highlight before I ask for permission from all of you to accept them. One is an MOA between the school district and the Monroe Woodbury Teachers Association. It was mentioned by one of our speakers, Mr. McElroy, earlier, extending their current collective bargaining agreement through the year 2022, 2023 school year. Additionally, we have two retirements. One is Russ Cox, who was a custodian here for over 22 years, and Ken Paquette, who was a bus driver here for over 27 years. So I wish them much luck, happiness, and enjoyment in, in the coming years. And lastly, just one of the highlights is, we spoke last board meeting about the hiring of full-time substitute teachers. There are 10 full-time substitute teachers on the Board of Ed agenda tonight for approval. The way that they are being divvied out basically is we have three of them will be at the high school every day, two at the middle school, one will be assigned to every elementary school. If we find that a particular elementary school doesn't, you know, is very well-staffed for a day, and there's a need in another building, we have the ability to move them from, from building to building to cover everybody. So it's, it's a big hire. I appreciate the support from the board. And with that, we respectfully request approval for the items listed under personnel.
Motion.
Okay, thank you. A second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Patrick for business and financial?
So I would also respectfully request the approval of the items listed under the business and financial section of the agenda. So includes our monthly financial reports for November, approval of contract with the Orange County Department of Mental Health, acceptance of a donation of $32 for the high school and, and MW cares from the Blackbaud Giving Fund, declaration of obsolete or surplus vehicles and equipment, approval of the 2022, 23 budget calendar. That's, so that's coming for this year. Award of contracts for UPK services for next year, and a budget transfer for board approval.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions from this? Okay, may I have a motion?
Motion.
A second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. May I have a motion to adopt the committees on special education and preschool education, numbers 15.1 through 15.4?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Reports by board and central office. Sergei?
I just wanted to wish that everybody, first of all, new, happy new year, and just everyone to stay healthy. Hopefully, this wave of the pandemic is going to decline in the next couple of weeks, and hopefully, we can continue in-person learning for our students. And thank you to the teachers, the bus drivers, members of the cabinet for making this district functional and working. Thank you.
Thank you. Dawn?
I just want to again thank Mr. McElroy and Mr. Gardner for, for speaking to us. I look forward to reading what you said, because again, it was very difficult for me to hear. I know the mask doesn't affect my ears, but for some reason, the mask, the thing. So, thank you.
Thank you. Dawn?
Hope everyone stays safe. I know this is spreading really badly, so hopefully we can get back to normal very soon.
Thank you. Suzanne?
I would just like to wish everyone a happy and healthy new year, and as Dawn said, everybody stay safe.
Thank you. Lisa?
I'd like to wish everybody a good evening. Stay safe and stay warm.
Thank you. Vargov?
Earlier this morning, we administered the simulation of computer-based testing. I know not many people want to hear it, but the New York State is still on for the, as of today. Big shout out to our students, parents, but also our teachers and administrators to participate in this simulation test. This allow us not only to test the capacity of our network, but also give students some experience of what does the real test look like in case if the state decides to go in, in late March, early April. Our current third and fourth grade students, believe it or not, took that simulation test first time because last year this test was canceled. Some good feedback from teachers and administrators to make some creative ways to informing parents on how to charge the Chromebook a little bit earlier, collect the Chromebook. So it allows us to start prepping for the real test if the state decides to go in that direction. But again, big shout out to teachers and administrators to supporting this initiative.
Thank you. Eric?
Just a quick congratulations to all the retirees and to all those that are newly appointed tonight. Also, a big thank you to the board for approving Kids Corner and Little Pals as community partners for our universal pre-K program. We're, we're very excited, certainly this year as our inaugural year of the program, to be able to add seats for the 2223 school year. Just, we've started to receive questions from the community about when we're going to be conducting the registration for that program, and we'll have information about the structure of the program as well as how to register for the program by the end of the week. So please be on the lookout on the district website for that. I was also asked to give a, a quick update regarding class ranking here at the high school. It's kind of a continuation of a discussion that we had at a Board of Ed meeting mid-year last year, because last year there was a, a shift in how class ranking was done. Initially, class rank was done in the fall for seniors for the purposes of college applications, and in the spring, only the top 30 students were reranked for the purposes of the top 25. Last year, that, that was shifted so that there was the initial ranking that was done for application, college applications in the fall, and then also all seniors were reranked in the spring because of requests that we had received beyond the top 30 to be reranked. The process that's going to be in place for this school year is the same as the process was last year. Seniors got a letter in October just outlining they were given their class rank again, as they typically have been in, in the past for college applications. And in that letter, it had stated to them that there would be another reranking again in the springtime. Again, not for just the top 30 students, for the top 25, but for all seniors. So that information had been communicated initially to the seniors when they got their ranking in the fall, and then that will again take place in the, in the springtime.
Are we anticipating continuing that next year, or is there a, a look to change the entire?
As, as we had shared in the past, we're, we're exploring, kind of evolving into a Latin honors system. And, and that conversation is really a, a multi-year conversation where it needs to, personally, in my opinion, it, it needs to be something that begins with the freshman class, where it's not just something that is suddenly changed for the older students, because we've had conversations about having a ranking appear, because there is a GPA that appears on all students' report card, having that rank take place, and, and having it be rather than just what your position is, having it be based upon this individual student's performance with regards to a range of, you know, grades for that GPA. Obviously, you know, we, we have a shift in administration here at the high school, so certainly that's going to be a conversation that's going to involve the new, the new principal as well. So that, that conversation still is happening. We just weren't in a place this year to, to initiate that process, so we're kind of sticking with the process that was put into place for last year. So that, that's remaining unchanged.
And just a comment about, can we consider, if we don't already, sharing that information with the rising freshmen? Because some of those eighth graders do take high school classes that ultimately affect their GPA.
And that's part of the reason why the belief is it really, it really, when the pro, when the program is going to be implemented, it really should start with the freshmen because the incoming freshmen for eighth graders-
Tell them in seventh grade.
Because they're, they're the ones that are starting, forming their GPA, rather than having it be something that happens for a, a student's tail-end time in the high school. It really should be communicated and started at the, at the beginning and kind of phased in, rather than just an on-off switch.
Maybe in like the end of seventh grade, because ultimately, eighth grade is when they start taking their-
Correct.
Their high school class.
Correct.
So for this current year, then, it's still the top 25 format?
No, no, no. The, the, the top, the top 25, I'm sorry. The, the top 25 will be in place for this year, but the reranking that's going to be in the spring is not just the top 30 for the determining of the top 25. It's a reranking of all students. It's the same process as last year.
Okay. And then with that comment that you just made in regards to the transition at an earlier grade, is it safe to say at this point that you wouldn't be looking to make the shift to the Latin honors program until the class of 2025 has graduated? Because those are our current freshmen now, correct?
Correct. So it, it would not, it would not be starting with the current freshman group.
Okay.
Because, again, to, to sort of shift it midstream is not really fair to the population of kids. It should be communicated to them at the beginning of, of their experience.
Okay.
But that evolution is, you're, you're correct, that it would be a transitioning out of, you know, a fairly antiquated top 25 system and having it be something that is more individually based where, you know, it, what happens if you end up being that number 26 student? That, that, that's still an astounding accomplishment to be number 26, and that student should be, should be recognized, which is part of the rationale behind that shift towards that Latin honors system.
Especially when you put it in a bigger context, that we're a, a student body of almost 600 and something students.
Correct.
To be, you know, 50 is still very, very-
Amazing. Absolutely. 100%. Yep.
Okay. Thank you. I just, I wanted to give Dan an opportunity, because I'm sorry, but from over here, I thought I saw that he raised his hand, Vargov, but I could be wrong. Does he want to, Dan, did you want to say anything? I just want to give you the opportunity if you wanted to.
You got it. Absolutely.
I'm sorry, can you just repeat what he said? At least paraphrase.
He just said, he said, "Thank you."
Okay. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Dan.
And the only other, the only other thing is, is just to say, welcome back to everybody. Mr. Kravitz and I had an opportunity to visit a bunch of the buildings, and it's great having everybody back. I, I agree with the comments earlier about, you know, just the amount of work and effort that goes into maintaining in-person instruction and sort of the perception of normalcy. If you look on the district calendar, there are many normal events that are listed on the district calendar, from orientations to concerts. I, I attended a concert here in the high school before winter break where one of the ensembles that performed was too large to meet health and safety guidelines on the stage. So they ended up performing from the rear of the auditorium in the seats so that they could fully spread out. The easy thing to do would be able to take account of the number of kids and say, oh, the kids are too large, we're just going to cancel this event. We're not going to be able to do it. It, it takes a lot of effort of many people putting their heads together in order to be able to pull so many of these events off. So I just want to say thank you to everybody for all of the support in, you know, maintaining as much as we possibly can in the school district. Thanks to everybody. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Patrick?
So I just wanted to thank all the safety and clerical staff that worked this past Saturday distributing the home test kits. So there was a lot of planning and a lot of work that went into that event, and it was smooth and seamless, and I think everyone did a really nice job. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Matt?
I just want to update regarding the strategic plan. Just want to let everybody know that our surveys will be going out the first week of February, week of January 31st, February 1st, 2nd, 3rd, 4th, 5th. We have, what we'll be doing basically is, that will be the week that we will be sending home a mailing. We have 17,000 copies being made at our, our local BOSI's. That can then get sent to a mailing site, and they fold everything just in order for us to get the mailing out, so that not only can our, the people who work here who will get everything online, but all of our community members who will get a mailing, and they'll have access to the, the survey that way. So that's the update as far as the strategic plan survey. That's it.
Okay. Thank you very much. Jamel?
Stay warm. Have a good night.
Thank you. Anthony?
Just want to wish everyone a happy and healthy 2022.
Thank you. Michael?
Just a great big thank you to the district employees. There's a lot of work that goes into pivoting and getting the students back in the building. Uh, there's a lot of work that goes into pivoting and getting the students back in the building. And, um, I, as a parent in the district, truly appreciate it. Um, be safe and have a good evening.
Thank you. Elsie?
Um, I just wanted to say thank you to everyone, again, same thing, for being able to open schools for all of our students this week. It took a lot of work from a lot of different people, but we did it, so I'm really proud of that. Um, I look forward to working with our union. I know that Jake mentioned some concerns, and we, we are planning to meet, I think, tomorrow. Um, and it's important because there's a partnership between the school district and our teachers, right? They're part of our constituents and, and, and it's an important partnership. Um, we're still on target for our survey that we're going to administer to our high school staff, to our high school students, and to our high school parents because we are still in the process of hiring a building principal for the coming school year. And so that survey will be going out early in February. I had originally written a letter, and I just wanted to say we're still on target for doing that. Our goal is to, um, create a survey to gather data and then help us to, uh, make decisions, uh, as far as who we select to be the permanent building principal. And with that, stay warm and have a good night.
Thank you so much. Um, I too, I just wanna thank the high school again. I know that I repeatedly say this, but it is a lot for us to be here. I do appreciate the fact that because of COVID, we are being hosted here at the high school. So I know it's a lot of work for everybody, and we definitely appreciate it. Hopefully, at some point, we'll be able to be in the closer quarters of the Education Center. But for the time being, thank you so much for always hosting us. Um, thank you to the speakers. Um, I agree with what others have said here. It is definitely a collaboration. Um, I think, again, to say what Michael said, that as a parent of two current students that are in the district, I am extremely grateful that we are able to do as much as we can as we see all over not only Orange County, but across the US. That is not always the case. So I am certainly grateful for the leadership that is able to, uh, come together and make that happen for our students. Um, I was very thankful that we were able to attend through the music department, the caroling that had been offered this year. It is truly a highlight, and I will be honest that I did shed a couple of tears because we have some amazingly talented students. And I just wanna thank them for being able to bring a little piece of normalcy back at that time of year. It was one of the only events that I was able to attend, so it was great to be able to be there for that. And I think we looked and saw that it hadn't been done since 2018, is that right? So it's been a few years, and it really is a, a wonderful experience where the students go around, um, to the buildings and do some caroling, and, uh, it was greatly appreciated. So thank you for making that happen. Um, I wanna give another shout out for the website. I'm still learning to navigate it, but thank you to all the work that's gone into that. I hope the parents are able to visit there. We also have the new app. Please go ahead and look that up because we have gotten some positive feedback even yesterday in the Student Leadership Committee on that. So please go ahead. That's a great resource for you to get information. Um, I'm gonna echo about the surveys. I know sometimes it's time-consuming as parents, but I think the district is doing their best to get these out there. This is your opportunity to be the voice. So if you have something that you wanna say, aside from coming here and speaking publicly, sending the board an email, reaching out to the superintendent, please take the time to answer the surveys because they are instrumental in us being able to work closely with administration to, uh, accomplish goals. So I encourage you to do the surveys. God bless you.
Thank you.
And, um, my last, oh, excuse me, we're, last is, uh, we have a working session for the board on January 26th. And then our next follow-up meeting, um, is the beginning of February, which will be our public meeting. And our last official piece of business is to wish Mrs. Dawn Talber a very lovely birthday tomorrow. So, uh, thank you so much, and happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
May I have a motion to adjourn?
A motion.
A second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.